With the friends of Squaw Valley and the HOA Forum and the Property Union Association and Palisades Tahoe and on and on to put this together. So it's not just one organization. But again, feedback in terms of the end, whether the couple hours that you're going to be here to listen to all this is valuable would be great. All right. And then if people think it is, we will definitely hold more. We've got a bunch of speakers and the purpose of this gathering is for information. So it is not to debate any one particular project or anything that anyone says. You know, the slides will give ample opportunity. It'll say when projects will come up for review and when there'll be opportunity for public discussion. This is not the place for that. And I may come down on someone and say, please, we're not going to answer that question. The idea here is to move along, answer, to get everybody an opportunity to present what they're going to do. It's been two years at least since we've actually even had a in-person MAC meeting or DRC meeting. So again, this is an opportunity for people to hear what's going on with the different groups that operate in the valley. And oftentimes Olympic Valley is kind of overlooked because we're kind of a small out of the way place, but there's a lot going on here and you'll hear about that today. So this is mostly that way information, but if someone says something that you don't understand or you'd like some more detail, by all means, ask the question. There's time for that. We don't have a hard deadline. There are people online, but we've shut them down. They can only ask questions via chat. And Richard, who I owe an indebted gratitude for putting all the IT stuff together, will be monitoring the chat. So with that, anybody have any questions about how we're going to run this? Right, sort of a process? All right, so. Right, you're used to that. So the first speaker is our supervisor Cindy Gufferson. And by the way, I think we owe her a ton of gratitude for stepping up and agreeing to do what has got to be a thankless job every single day of the year. But she agreed to be here and we appreciate it. So Cindy.
Thanks, everybody. I don't know some of the faces here, so I'll just give you by way of background. I've lived in the community of Tahoe City now for 40 years, so I kind of know Olympic Valley. I would never say I did live here for about six months when I first moved into town, but the rest of the time I've been over in Tahoe City. When I drew my hat in the ring to be the county supervisor, Jennifer Montgomery, our previous supervisor, had moved on to the state. And so I made the decision that I really thought this area needed representation and I wanted to jump in and try to represent us at the Board of Supervisors. Interestingly enough, I was appointed and then I had to run immediately. And for those of you who don't know, 80 to almost 90% of the voters for my district live on the other side of the hill, going all the way now down past Auburn, California. And so I spent four days a week driving down and getting to know those communities, which, you know, I was the Tahoe gal and they didn't want the Tahoe gal, but I was able to win the election and then COVID hit. So for some of you, I haven't met you yet because we were locked down and not meeting as much in person, but the Board of Supervisors has been meeting the whole time in person. And we do meet twice a month. I also get to serve on a couple, many other committees and boards in my role with the Board of Supervisors. So it's been an honor. It's been a lot of work and I have learned a tremendous amount, a great deal of respect for what I didn't know, how little I knew about the job when I jumped in. But it's been a real privilege and honor to serve you. So I just have a few slides and I'm happy to answer questions. I'm better at answering questions than I am giving big speeches. So we'll just go through the slides and I can do it. Are you, yeah, thank you. First and most important, for those of you who are local voters, you get a chance in this primary election to vote on Measure A, which is the renewal of the extra 2% of TOT. We originally passed that back in 1994 and I was on a committee that worked really hard to make sure that that top 2% went to infrastructure projects in our region. And so for over all those years, it has generated a huge amount of money. About $4 million a year right now is coming out of that 2%. And you can see what the language says. It was expanded to include, most importantly, housing. And we'll talk a little more about housing, but it also originally was infrastructure projects only, but now it is available for services in the region as well. And Election Day, June 7th, if you haven't already voted, please do. I've heard the voter turnout is pretty light in this primary. I talked to Ryan Ronco, who's head of our Elections Department. He said it's very light and typically Placer County voters are very involved. We have over 80% of our voters who typically vote, so hopefully people will get their ballots in. I don't know, I'll keep going and then if we have questions, we can come back to any of these items. Next one you've probably heard about is a project the county is undertaking. And this is to connect the from Olympic Valley Road all the way to meet up with the legacy trail in Truckee. Because it is not easy to build a separated Class 1 bike trail without impacting private ownership along the Truckee River, we've heard a lot of controversy from folks that do live along the Truckee River about which alignment. We're going to be looking at all the alignments. The EIR is out now and being worked on. I'm saying when I say it's out now, the scoping's already been done. It's underway and we are anticipating that that'll come back. They're saying sometime this winter, the environmental document will be released and the first segment of construction wouldn't happen until at least 2025. So, but really important segment of trail, you know, our goal is to get the whole resort triangle connected with a Class 1 bike trail. So when we say Class 1, it's the one that you see. It's a paved, separated trail from the highway. And we've all been doing our segments for many, many years. I spent a lot of time working on the Tahoe City Trail Network in my previous career. Next, and I know you're going to hear from Joy, so I'm going to cover this briefly. The rest of the region copied Olympic Valley's efforts on micro mass transit. Of course, Keith, I would always give you credit. And learned from the best and expanded last year with our TART Connect program, which operates very similarly to your Mountaineer on-demand service with an app. And to this point, we have installed two, I'm sorry, installed, we have spent almost $2 million in that program for ridership on the North Shore and West Shores of Lake Tahoe. We connect them with Crystal Bay. They're doing micro mass transit, so we've got a really robust system coming together on micro mass transit. And how many of you have ever taken a TART bus? Okay, well, hey, that's good because I never did and yours living here. So, but I'm taking the micro mass transit. That's a lot easier for my schedule, so on-demand works. And then short-term rentals. This has been a really hot button item outside the valley. I'm not sure how important it is within the valley and so you'll let me know. There's certainly been a concern that short-term rentals have been a huge part of taking away housing inventory for our local employees. So we, the Board of Supervisors, right after I got on, we had what we said were nuisance issues. So everybody could get a permit, but we were going to make sure that we were dealing with noise, trash, parties, parking off-site, those sorts of issues. We developed that ordinance and right after that, we saw this housing crisis really take off. And so we went back this year and redid the ordinance to put a cap on the number of short-term rentals that would be allowed in the region. So we announced that, we adopted that, I believe it was February or March. The renewal period started April 1 and people right now have an opportunity to renew their permit until June 30th. And if your application isn't in, then we're going to start giving those to other people. You had 98 and you're down to 21. These are outside the condo hotels. These are single-family homes. You had 98, only 21 have renewed at this point. So we're not sure what that means, but if you have a short-term rental, get your permit in. We have about 500 people on the waiting list for short-term rentals region-wide and we'll see what happens with that. We greatly expanded the fee so that we can hire more enforcement officers. We will have five enforcement officers covering the region. We used to have one and a half. So this will fund us having five. It will also include defensible space inspections and fire and health safety inspections on the property being rented. So that's where we stand. Again, deadline, June 30th. If you have a short-term rental and want to renew it, get it in now because otherwise I don't know how many will be available once we start releasing those to new applicants. Here and raise my family and enjoy this incredible area. And I don't see our young people being able to do that. My kids can't do that. My neighbors' kids can't do that. They want to. We want to have a healthy local community that complements our second homeowner and visitor community. We need these people to work, whether they're teachers or firefighters or nurses or restaurant workers. We need people in our community to do that. So Placer County has been really trying to follow a number of best practice models from other counties because the rest of Placer County, while we have a housing issue, nothing like what we have up here. So we've been looking at other resort communities and the one we've patterned, our Workforce Housing Preservation Program off of is Vail, Colorado. George Ruther, who is the Housing Director for Vail, Colorado, came out and met with us and explained what they were doing to actually purchase deed restrictions on homes with public dollars. And what it would mean is that if you're willing, we are willing to give you up to $150,000 to buy a deed restriction on the house. When you then sell, you can make as much money as you want, but you have to sell it to someone else who is going to live and work in the community. Maximum, I'm sorry, you've got to be at least one person in the household working full-time, minimum of 30 hours a week in the local community. And that's patterned right after Vail, Colorado's. It's been extremely successful. We have 25 people, couples and individuals that have qualified for the program since we opened it up last summer. They can't find houses to buy even with $150,000 down payment free to them. So I think we have one that is in escrow right now of the 25, but it's extremely frustrating. We hope, I mean, as you all know, the housing prices continue to escalate rapidly and even with $150,000, it's been challenging. So the board last week made some decisions to eliminate any kind of income cap as long as you're employed locally. We're not going to look at the income because we're buying the deed restriction. What we're doing is buying a housing unit for local housing. So we're not going to worry about the two, it was 245% of AMI, which is, you know, difficult because it depends on, there isn't a set amount. It depends on how many individuals live in the home, how many family members you have taken that cap off. We've also said, if you already own a home, we ran into, in fact, I was in a meeting where one of the firefighters at North Tahoe said, I'd love to do a program. Own a home, your program doesn't allow me to sell my home in Carson Valley and move up here. So we are going to eliminate that. You can have owned a home previously outside the area and we'll let you move that equity up and try to buy a home up here. And I think there's a third one and I'm forgetting what that one is, so sorry. But we made those adjustments and we're hopeful that we'll get some more local folks to actually be able to invest, purchase a home here in our community. We're also, I'm sorry, go back one second, lease to locals. We are going to incentivize second homeowners and property owners to rent to local residents, either in six-month increments or 12-month increments. We're going to provide some additional incentive through, from our transient occupancy tax funds to help people agree to lease to locals. I mentioned the new income limit. We have Hopkins Village, which is 56 units out in, by Schaefer's Mill, right across the street from Schaefer's Mill entrance and adjacent to La Houghton, Marty's Camp, that were first-time home purchases. And I think we have a waiting list for those as they come online. They're being developed in blocks and they're small, three-bedroom, two-bath kind of town home sort of units. And then we're making a. Create more opportunity to do parcel splits. There was a Senate Bill Number 9, SB 9, that allows for parcel splits so that single-family residents can build an ADU and actually sell it off for rented, so.
Question?
Yeah.
What if you already own a home and want to change it to a deed restriction for full-time locals in the future if you sell? I hope you understand that because.
Yes, I do. So we debated that. What the question is, yeah, the question is whether second, say if you own a home, can we, like, could I take $150,000 right now and know that someday in the future I'm going to sell to somebody? We're holding off on that part of the program because we could use all the money and end up with, hopefully me, living a long time and that's not an additional employee in the area. So, so Vail, Colorado has done that. We're going to try to hold off and try to get these out to first time or younger employees being able to buy a home here. So, any other question there? Okay, yes.
I was talking on the funding. Is that coming out of TOT taxes?
Yes. The question was, is it coming out of TOT taxes? The funding we're using for most of the housing programs is our very own transient occupancy tax dollars from up here.
What's one of the single-family residents, are they allowing in-law units or some of the past years?
Oh, yeah.
Has that changed the rates?
I'm sorry, I didn't, maybe.
I was sure that they allow more, people have existing history, they have, they have an in-law unit in the home, it's still single-family residence. Does that change our life or is it?
No, state laws require so that the.
Summarize the question.
Yes, I will, but I'm sorry. The question was, have we loosened up our restrictions on accessory dwelling units, in-law units, in homes? Yes, state law actually mandated it and we have. Now, you still have to work with your local utility district and fire district, make sure that it meets all, you know, safety criteria and water and sewer, but yes. And that's what we're talking about with these housing code amendments. We're continuing to try to catch up with a lot of the steps the state has done to encourage housing. We've got a housing crisis throughout the state, so yeah, thank you. And then I'll, I said I was going to be quick and I keep talking too long. Keep going, you can go to the next slide. And then project status, I wanted to go over a few of the projects that are currently in the works and how you can get more information on them as we move forward. The Granite View Condominiums, that's a 52-unit hotel condo. Okay. Okay, so basically it's in the process of going through approvals. The EIR has been contracted and the scoping meeting was held May 12th on that Granite Peak, so we'll be underway with an EIR on that project. And so stay tuned and I want to make sure you know where to go on Placer County's website so you can understand the status of these projects. And I know that you're going to have more discussion in detail on the Sierra Family Meadows planned project. Again, that's moving through the process right now. And Amy Cornelius is the planner who would take comments on that. Plump Jack was previously approved and they've asked for an extension of time till April of 2024 on that project. And then the Snow Sports Museum is underway with the EIR. The scoping session was held on that and that's moving forward as well. And we can talk more about the details on those. And what is really important here, take a picture or I can send this to you. If you want to know about any of those projects, the status is updated regularly there. You'll know when the public meetings are coming up on those. You'll know how to provide input. Most of the larger projects will end up going to the Planning Commission. They'll have public hearings and take public input. The MAC will be at this level, then the Planning Commission, Olympic Valley, DRC, and then finally to the Board of Supervisors. So I'm way down here by the time, you know, we're weighing in on these projects. But it's really important that you can, because people have been asking me, how do we keep track of it? There's a great math and great information on that project site. I think that's my last slide. Do I have anything? So any other question? Yes, Keith.
How is it, what if they are, as a county, have you determined we need 30,000 new houses for employees? Here's the Vail model, chops up from these pieces, we doing all right, we solved it? Or are we just chipping away and trying stuff? How comprehensive even is this problem? Can it be defined and can it be tackled in a way that you can, wow, give you another five years and $20 million and we got it done? Or where is a comprehensive solution in your mind?
Well, Placer County is part of a collaborative that was established up here in 2015 where the major funder of what's called the Mountain Housing Council. And that's a collection of all the public agencies, private sector, as well as nonprofits. And so all of those meet regularly once a quarter with the town of Truckee, Nevada County, Placer County, Eldorado County, TRPA for the basin area. And we put together a housing needs assessment as a group, as a region. The number is daunting. I believe the number is around 9,000 units that they've identified need to be transferred back into local, to house local employees. That's the need. So how can we, you know, we can't build our way out of that. That's why we're trying to buy some of these units. That's why we're looking at other solutions to dealing with it because it is a daunting number. And we're doing 100 here, 40 there, 50 there, but we're making a dent and it's more than zero. So, and that's the challenge. I mean, I don't know how we get out of the limitations we have up here, create demand, which escalates values, which means, you know, how does a young person like I was at one point able to buy? That has disappeared in this region, so.
I think we should move on. Thank you. Okay, the next presenter is Jason Hansford. No, he doesn't have a slide to show.
Nope.
So just speak into that magic box there.
I will.
And introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Jason Hansford. I am the Vice President of Development for Palisades Tahoe. Like following up with Cindy, she's doing such great work here. It's great to have a representative that's so active in our community. A little bit of background on myself, very familiar with the area. I've been in, lived in Truckee for 32 years, was involved with the La Houghton project, Marty's Camp, the downtown rail yard, and was recently approached last summer to come onboard with Palisades Tahoe to help out with their growth capital initiative. So how do we reinvest the money that's made? So how do we reinvest that back into our on-mountain and off-mountain facilities? I pot skiing at Squaw Valley for 12 years, I believe, and a part-time basis and my kids all ski race for Squaw Valley, so Palisades Tahoe, excuse me, I'm still, it's, you know, it's still ingrained. I'm practicing all the time, every day, so I apologize. So David asked me to come here today to talk a little bit about what we have going on this summer and kind of what our plans are. Really, one of the pivotal things that super excited about is the base-to-base facility. So linking the base facilities over on the OB side over to the Alpine side, we think this will be really pivotal of both connecting the mountains and really having a place that is, it feels like one resort rather than two distinct areas. And I think there are going to be a lot of benefits to that. We're super excited about it. I think our guests will be super excited about it and increasing skier terrain and hopefully keeping people out of their vehicles and using that as a means to move back and forth across the mountains. Last year, we successfully got in all the heavy lifting, so all the towers, all the foundations, all the base terminals, all kind of the hard impacts to get over the hill. Did that with a light footprint and got those all in place. And then this year, we're focused in on getting the terminals in place and getting kind of the infrastructure associated with that. A lot of pieces kind of move around with that. The old Red Dog chair, we're happy to say we're putting in a six-pack Red Dog chair. What we call the KT East Days. So now we'll have an opportunity to go from the base-to-base, you'll be able to go from the OB side, get off at the top of KT, or likewise coming from Alpine, be able to get off at the top of KT, basically doubling that capacity. So that really keeps a lower mountain activity going. And then with the new Red Dog chair, we think that's super exciting. We are cleaning up some of the base areas there. I appreciate all our employees kind of bearing with us as we move kind of locations and tear out some of the old buildings there, tearing those down and actually commissioning and recycling all the metals and the woods are being chipped up and then farmed out as well for recycling. So those are kind of improvements. Let's see, what else we got going? Alpine Meadows, we're expanding the deck facilities over at the Chalet. No changes to the building itself, so it'll still have its same character, but there's more outdoor seating there, so we're pretty excited about that. Yes, sir.
Where, there's been controversy over the year. Where is the base of Red Dog going to be now?
It is, so if you are familiar with Red Wolf and where the white buildings are, which we call the Red Dog complex.
Just going to angle it over and take pretty much the.
You can get, yeah, you can get a pretty good view shot of it right now. All the trees were cut down, they were removed. We're bringing the helicopter back on Tuesday, I believe, in the afternoon and we'll get the remaining trees out of that. Once the snow smelts, we'll survey the alignment, but yeah, so you can see the entire alignment. Really trying to address kind of that high exposure aspect of when you go over the gully there. I know Dee loves that. So we're trying to lower that down in elevation and make that a little. There you go, a little friendlier experience. And then another initiative that's really happening and taking a forefront, and I know Dee's taking charge of this, is, you know, we're a large employer in the area. Workforce housing and being able to house our employees is an important element. We're actively engaging and seeking out opportunities throughout the community to purchase and be able to house our employees. And that's not a one-size-fits-all. Those are dormitory-style housing, those are single-family resident units, those are full-time employees who have their families in them, so there's not a one-size-fits-all. We are working on our specific plan. Cindy's staff has been very accommodating and we had an appellate decision that found some deficiencies in the EIR. We are addressing that, but as part of that exercise, we're also moving forward with the workforce housing project across the street. So really excited about that. That will be a mix of dormitory and kind of one-bedroom studio units. And we're looking to hopefully break ground as soon as next summer. So we're really, it's one of the most important things for us because we need to invest in our community.
Yes. What's the latest timeline on base-to-base condo law opening?
We'll be skiing on it this year, so there you go. So the 20, the 23, or 22, 23 ski season, so that's the answer.
Did you update people on the Village Project and the Plaza between Members' Locker Room and the. Did you update people on the village project and the plaza between members locker room and the.
Yeah, so I guess village project, are you talking about the village-specific plan? Yeah, so we are addressing the items from the appellate decision. We think that we'll have those in sometime beginning of next year. And then we'll go through the process. We need to go through the planning commission, we need to go through the board of supervisors and reapprove those, the certification of the EIR for that. We'd like to get that going. We obviously have been kind of juxtapositioning how we approach things. We've done a lot of on-mountain improvements over the last 10, 15 years. Started with KSL, kind of expanding the uphill capacity and cleaning up kind of the function of the mountain. But, you know, frankly, Alex, Alex in all of his vision was, we're all about uphill capacity. We need some lodging at the base of the facility. We need some, get people out of their vehicles, and that's an important element of the specific plan. Regarding the plaza, so David's talking about when you walk through the mud in the spring and the fall to go up to the funney. We're actually going to pave that area, build that up. It'll be a very, it'll complement the existing plaza, but there'll be a plaza where you don't have the opportunity to have to walk up steps to get to either the funatelle or over to the base-to-base gondola. So we think that'll be a nice amenity, kind of linking members locker room, funatelle, and then the base-to-base. So those are kind of our improvements. I'm sure there are questions.
Just a couple of comments. On the uphill capacity, I've been. This is slow on the chair. I'm sent to accept the squaw, as well as granite chief, two good runs in respect for rights. Also, those may be given by the.
I think we would love to see, yeah, sorry. He was asking about two other chairs in particular. One was granite chief and the other one was the resort chair. The resort chair, we'd love to see that get expanded. We continue to talk to ownership. We don't actually own that run or the chair itself. So that's actually owned by the resort. But hopefully there's an opportunity down the road that we could see something happen there. Granite chief, you know, it's just, where do you pick your priorities, right? It's more advanced terrain, where do you put, where do you put your money? So we're balancing all those things and we're looking at where does it make the most sense for us to build up a capacity on the hill? We do have a master plan that does cap uphill capacity, so that's always a balancing act as well, so.
Hey, Jason.
Yes, sir.
You missed snowmaking.
Oh, snowmaking, sorry. Yeah, we're only putting in five and a half million dollars worth of snowmaking this summer. So we're doing that over at Hot Wheels. We're doing, going up the Weasel and going up that area. Over on this side of the hill, we're going up the full length of exhibition up to the top of that. And then we're improving some of the guns and snowmaking on snowgate. So really, really exciting stuff. Yes.
Few years ago, there were discussions about the locker room, members locker room going away. Is that going to now be just built into that plaza or what's the, what's the plan?
It's a pretty special building and it's staying as it is and it'll be integrated into the plaza. Any other questions?
There are some questions.
Yeah. Plans to repurpose, are there plans to repurpose the existing Red Dog chair?
We are going to hold on to that. Clearly, there are other resorts that could utilize that. We do think there are some potential opportunities and we haven't assessed where that would be yet, but we are certainly holding on to it because it is, it still has some love.
And are the tentative plans for the employee housing project, how it may affect current homeowners along Squaw Creek?
Well, it's right across the street, so I'm not.
Let's not address that one, because that was addressed when the EIR came out before.
Yeah, and there will be opportunities for public comment when that project comes forth, just like other projects.
What is the uphill capacity?
I would have to get you the maximum number from, I'd have to get that for you, but I'm happy to answer that if you contact me or I can get your email and I'll give you that.
Any plans to resurface? I was getting beat up at this point.
Yeah, at some point, we hopefully, hopefully we'll be seeing the village-specific plan being implemented and getting some covered parking that would go with the podium. And then there would be tiered parking kind of on the, on the north lots there. So that's where we'd like to see the resurfacing come from. But it's something that we're balancing and kind of where do we set? Parking management's one of those things. How do we best manage people? And I'm, I'm, I'm one of the violators, right? I have three people who come here on the weekends to go ski. I have a different schedule than my kids, than my wife. You know, how do you get people out of their vehicles? It's, it's, it's parking management through telephone technology and internet and other opportunities. There are electronic solutions that are being implemented and we're assessing those as we move through the process.
And some of that will be addressed with joy talks.
Okay.
All right, so thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Appreciate that. So next is the president or the president. Squaw Valley. It's, I. I assume you know Dee, she took over the job about a year ago now, maybe a little bit more?
Middle of August will be the anniversary, so.
Also stepped into a huge job, so thank you.
It's been a great honeymoon. Depending on how you measure it. Cindy, thank you for, I'll talk a little bit about workforce housing as well, even though Jason did. But thank you for leaving the charge and getting that done. I hadn't heard about those changes, those are really exciting. Thank you, community members, if you helped us in that space this last year. If you don't know, we only have 38 beds up here in Olympic Valley that we own. And so we went to the community last year and we were able to get about 130 master leases. So I don't know if any of you housed our folks, but if you did, thank you very much. We're going to need to do that again this year. In fact, I guess I'll dive right into it. We need about 300 beds for our seasonal workforce. So that's just a direct threat and that's why we, with Jason's leadership, have been. And we recognize that we're competing with other businesses and public agencies and whatnot for those beds. You know, we're all in this fight together, so hopefully we can continue to work cooperatively together. So back to my introduction, I just wanted to thank David and the team and Mike for getting us together. I had planned to host a community meeting up there this summer and this may take the place of that. So if you can keep this going, that'd be great. Yeah. And I also just wanted to take a quick second on behalf of myself and my team at Palisades, represented by Bill Hudson, who's also here today, and Jason, just to recognize it is Memorial Weekend and we really appreciate what our armed services have done for us, active and prior, and, you know, continue to provide a lot of contribution toward military. So we're going to continue that under my watch. As well, I guess since you folks haven't, I know I've met a lot of you and worked a little bit with some of you, but for those of you that don't know me, I'm a very transparent person. I'm very much, I've been here in the community now for 11 years. I came out from Vale, I was there, Vale and Aspen. I was there for basically all of my career, 25 years. Thought I'd come out here three to five years and it's home. Sold my place in Colorado. Had to downsize significantly in my equity. I just traded equity, you know, from Vale to here. And it didn't stretch nearly as far, but I have an awesome place on Watson Drive in the Highlands neighborhood. Small, but fantastic, and some of my neighbors are here. So it's, this is, this is really, we forget, right? How spectacular these surroundings are, how special this place is. So I just want you to know that Palisades Tahoe is committed to working with the community, to be a good community partner and citizen, to do development on the right scale. And to that, I'll just say it, we really do want to develop the village at the right scale. Just recently, a guest said, Dee, this is a beautiful setting, but I'm never coming back. How come? Your facilities are too tired. You know, you don't have enough to do. When the wind blows, your lifts go down and there's no alternative activities, so on and so forth. So just, just so you know, we're still, we're still missioned, but again, we want to do it tastefully and we want to do it so that it's really befitting, befitting of a mountain community. So one thing we're working on currently, my team and I, is restating our purpose and our mission. We haven't been very overt about that, I don't think, in the past. And what we continue to talk about in our, we haven't quite crafted it yet, but in our purpose, you know, why do we exist, why are we here, right? It's to make a difference in the lives of our guests and our community, to enrich lives. At the end of the day, what we do on the hill, what we get when we go out on the hill and ski and ride and a day out there, you know, that's it, that's an uplifting recreational experience. I look at recreation as recreation. So that's, that's the path we're going down, not a bunch of, you know, trinkets and activities that don't fit in to our valley and on our mountain, but things that are more authentic to us. So that's kind of just some, just some guiding principles behind what's going on. When we look at our operating model, both from a people and planet perspective, we talk about three constituencies, our guests, our employees, and our financial stakeholders, all of which you participate in. And so I thought today I'd go quickly through each of those constituencies, tell you a little bit about what's happened and what may be happening here in the future. And then the outlook. And Jason already covered a lot of the projects at hand. We can talk a little bit more about some of the long-term projects that are in the pipeline. So.
Keep going.
Keep going, okay.
I told you, you have to stop.
Yeah, I'm not going to talk, I'm not going to talk about the weather and review what happened with our snow. We did finally get our average, right? Over 400 inches. Now I've lost track of the dates, but maybe two weeks ago with Miracle May. Sometimes I talk about the snow and what that bred, you know? But let's just say it was really, really challenging, really, really challenging. We lost November and December in visitation essentially because of the weather. And then we got 17 and a half feet of snow at Christmas. You know what happened? We didn't get the upper mountain open until I think January 8th, it was either 8th or 9th. And kind of, you know, we are farmers, we are snow farmers, we are subject to the weather. And so there's only so much we can do. And as it turns out, roll the tape forward, we ended up having a very, very successful season despite. So we're going to, we're forecasted right now, although today is wind and yesterday, yesterday was a blowout of a, I think we had 700 guests on the hill. Today we have maybe, we had 700 at 11. We may hit, we're budgeted for 3,000 and that's based on average visitation on Memorial. We're probably going to hopefully hit 1,100 today. So my forecast was to hit 1.1 million on a budget of 1.2. And I don't think, I think we're going to be a bit shy, that's probably going to be more like 1.06. So that's not the highest visitation in our history. I think that'll be the third. I should have looked that up. But in any case, it was a good, you know, solid, solid visitation once we got into business on December 28th after being closed those days. So we only parked out a half a dozen days and depending on how you measure park out, right? The days that we actually did what we call code zebra, where we stopped everybody coming into the valley and say, hey, we're parked out, come back in a half an hour, hour, you know, depending on what time that is. There were only a handful of those, three days. But other days when, when, you know, you had a lot of load coming in here was about a dozen. So we are constantly, to what Jason said, we're constantly looking at that, working with CHP and the county to, you know, what more can we do? Nobody asked about Third Lane, Cindy. And I won't put you on the spot, but, you know, Third Lane would be, for mass transit, would be phenomenal. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, it's building another lane down 89, you know, from Truckee. So, and making it, in my view, making it HOA. I don't know what the latest conversation is on that. We are, just to be transparent, we are looking at reserved parking as early as this, as next year. I don't think we're going to get there, but we are, we are studying it. You see what's happening at Park City, Stowe, Alta last year, outside of Salt Lake. Crystal, our sibling installed reserved and paid parking last year. We saw, we see what's happening in those resorts, so we're looking at that. And that is actually probably the strongest tool or leverage to get more people into individual cars and fewer cars on the road. So plant that seed. I don't, again, I don't think it's going to happen this next year. And if it does happen, it would just be on weekends and holidays, just to, you know. And we make it very fair to all of our guests who have pre-purchased ski team, our programs, passes, so on and so forth. Um, our guests were, how do I describe it? Being in this job, it's a different perspective, you know, when you see a bigger picture. We have such a loyal following, it's one of our key strengths. It's also one of our biggest challenges. Because our very loyal following, right, is very critical. And they've got, they've got their perception, it's hard to change their perception. So quite frankly, we measured guest satisfaction in what's called net promoter score, NPS. We have a research tool that's constantly measuring throughout the season. You know, our goal coming off of a year ago was, which was 55, was 58 for this year. And we came in at 41, right? Yeah, gulp. And, and we, we just, we dug a massive hole that we never crawled out of at Christmas. And two things, two, two key drivers, why can't you get the mountain open? You suck, right? And Omicron, you don't care. You no longer care about safety, right? We have been following Placer County guidelines to a T throughout the Omicron or throughout the COVID pandemic. And, but people, a lot of people just said, you don't care about safety anymore, which was not true. But, and I'll stop there, but very frustrating. Traffic and parking will always be kind of a service bust depending on when you're coming into our resort. I hope everything's okay, Alan. And, and value for price paid or food quality, you know? On the positive, our staff metrics were all really solid. We measure things like professionalism, knowledge, helpfulness, friendliness, those things, really high marks this year. And I'm super delighted to report that our grooming score was second highest in Altera. I don't know if you guys noticed, you folks noticed, but we spent an extra 100K in labor and, and we did some, we changed the program and the guests responded. I think our grooming was, was better than ever. Do you agree?
Sure.
Yeah. We also had, we also had really good scores in our ancillary businesses. Bill Hudson now over Skier Services and I guess, Bill, you're, you're a better choice. You're doing a better job than I did because your, your, your scores were really, really solid, really good in ski school. Rentals, really all of, in fact, food and beverage service was very good. Our guests did, a lot of our guests didn't understand why we had a lot of venues closed. They didn't forgive us for lack of staffing, we saw a lot of that too. But for those that did understand, they were, they were actually quite delighted. So that's probably enough on the guests, I can go on and on, but I'll stop and move to the employee. We were short 400 this year out of a staff of 2,500. That's why you didn't see our lifts run. We will run all of our lifts when we can, that's my credo. But you can't when you don't have operators. And so we were all, Jason, Bill and I, we were all lift operators this year. We were bussers, we were, we were scanners, we were wherever we needed to be to support the operation. So our, the labor shortage is still critical. We're still understaffed to get all these projects done this summer. And we're quite frankly, very, very fearful, very scared for next year. Workforce housing is a key to being able to staff, especially those transient employees. Um, here's another metric. So we measure, we measure our employee satisfaction as well. And we have two measurements called engagement. And that's kind of a standard industry measurement and enablement. So engagement is how, how, how much do they go, how much do they basically, are they satisfied and will they promote you, right? So that plummeted from, it's going to be interesting if I have my job next year, right? That score, that score went from 81. That score, that score went from 81 down to 76. And it's because we worked them so hard. We, we, we worked them so hard. And certainly wages, um, are always, there's always an insatiable need, right, to earn more. That's what human beings want to do, right? So, but this year with all of the economic challenges with inflation, you know, I just paid 69, 89.98, 698, I think, at Chevron coming out here, um, in Tahoe City. You know, that's, and yeah, 84 bucks to fill my, my RAV. Wow. So, yeah, so, so that's tough, um, uh, for folks who are living paycheck to paycheck and trying to live the life. You know, I had that life that Cindy described as well, being in, in, uh, uh, ski school, uh, growing up and my career started in ski school and definitely lived paycheck to paycheck and season to season. And it was awesome. So we are addressing, uh, these things, the shortcomings and doing our best. This year we delivered a, a holiday gift, cash gift to everybody who worked during the holiday X number of hours over the minimum hours expected in, by their job type. We delivered a mid-season management bonus, uh, cash bonus. We did, we served more burritos and more burritos and free coffee than ever, right? We are allowing, or we're not allowing, we are gifting, uh, 25 gallons of gas this weekend to our leadership team as a thank you to just say, you go from fumes to fuel, uh, for this weekend to start the summer. And so, um, trying to, you know, just find ways to, to support them. And, um, and, oh, and back to wages. It gets really complicated, but we did deliver wage increases this last year. We delivered greater than 3% wage increases in some departments. We don't advertise like Vail. I love Vail Resorts. I'm good friends with Dieter Walsh and that team. I'll never put my neighbor down when we have this discussion, but you know, Vail, they like to, to do these big across-the-board initiatives and announce, and aren't we great? And it's great. Because they get the attention of the entire industry. And so when they made their, their announcement spring, or I guess it was February before their second quarter earnings call, that definitely put the, the industry and ourselves on our heels to, oh, great, what are we gonna do? We'd already talked about what we were doing, but it, it really did make us say, boy, we, we need to respond. Our staff is gonna be asking that. And they've been very tolerant, um, but we just literally delivered the first step in that change process, that increase process, if you will. It's gonna be a step process. And, uh, delivered a, on average, a 13% rate of pay increase for our summer team. And so that's not 13% for everybody. That's the average. And we raised our entry level from $15 to $18 with the exception of tipped positions. And most of the other, uh, entry level rates, still okay, Alan? Okay. That's not my team member, I hope. Yeah. The, uh, the, so that was the entry level, lowest entry level rate with the exception of tipped, which is going to 17. But all of the other departments, we, 19 to 30 bucks an hour. So we basically went across, I had to go through a spreadsheet of every single job type and code in person and apply the appropriate compression. So I'm not at liberty to share how much money that is today, but it's, it's significant for the last quarter of our season here or of our fiscal year. And then we built those, that plan plus more into our winter budget plan. And we won't have that, um, approved for a bit yet here, but we're excited that we'll be, we'll be, um, continuing on this path, um, into, into the winter. Feel good about that. So hopefully we'll win the, win the employee that says, I gotta go work at McDonald's for 19 instead of you, right? Yeah, we'll be at a McDonald's. Probably enough. Again, I could go on and on. Um, I'm looking at the clock over there. The other constituency then is financial stakeholders, which I consider our community and our commercial tenants and our employees and that are relying on a paycheck, so on and so forth. So happy to say that as challenging as the year has been, uh, it's probably gonna be a record, um, in EBITDA for us, but it would not be, would not be, uh, without Icon. It's pass sales and the credit we're getting for pass sales that's getting us to that, to the end zone. We would be falling short probably around 10% if that weren't the case. But we have, we're having a good year and, um, and, uh, very, uh, feel very fortunate that our loyal guests in Northern California, uh, buy that pass product early because that's what keeps us, keeps us, our economic engine going and stabilizes. You know, the ski industry does this depending on the weather. And so by selling passes early, it gives you that stable income stream and, and more confidence, um, in how you, how you manage your business.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Keith. Yeah. Our ancillary, we call ancillary ski school rentals and so on and so forth, lodging, um, had a good season. Not great, uh, some of them, but, but good solid season. Guest demand was really, was really up. In particular for our ski school season-long programs and ski team. Really sad this year, we were, we weren't able to hire enough coaches and so we had 150 kids on the waitlist. That is not, that is not what we aspire, right, to, to do. We want to host every kid that wants to be on our team. So Bill's working with Eric and the team to try to, you know, figure out how to, how to get more coaches and also how to recast, you know, um, some of our programming to fit more kids in. So thank you for your good work in that space. Of COVID. And so feel good that we were able to fill those spaces and those tenants are doing well. Um, things are, right? So the financial, the financial outlook is good, although of course we're all subject to the same, um, uh, dynamics at hand. It's a little bit scary, a little bit uncertain about where this is all headed, right? On that outlook, our summer bookings were pacing, um, well ahead of, of 2019. We benchmark off of 2019. 1819 was the last really solid, good season. And then, you know, we closed down mid-March of 20. So we're, we're pacing ahead of 1819 and largely our conference group businesses come back.
That's all, Joey.
Oh.
Keep going.
Uh, group is, group business has come back and weddings are, there, there is more than we can fulfill. So, um, it's, it, it feels really good. The, uh, the phones ringing for ski team, for ski school programs that are seasonal. Uh, when are you gonna sell parking, preferred parking? Uh, we're out there with lockers. Locker sales are, are solid, not over the top, but, but solid. So the outlook, I think, uh, for all of us is, is, is quite, uh, rosy at the moment. Jason talked about our current projects. Uh, really happy to report that, you know, the company is investing approximately another 60 million in Palisades Tahoe. Uh, we're getting, we're getting a lot of our share compared to our, uh, 14 other brethren, uh, or sister resorts. And then on a look forward, we've got things like remodeling Gold Coast Lodge, adding, uh, ski school, uh, facilities and services over at Alpine. Help me out. I'm failing now to remember this list. Um, we have a, uh, an initiative called Unlock Summer. We're trying to figure out what we're gonna do at High Camp and how to bring more, more activities, authentic mountain activities into the valley and especially how to utilize High Camp. So we've got another, uh, about 150-ish million, don't quote me, out there in the next, um, two to four years beyond, beyond this one. So the company believes in Palisades Tahoe. They're making that investment. We feel extraordinarily, um, fortunate. And, and, uh, we really wanna do our part to, to, uh, contribute to the experience here and, you know, get things done in the right way. Our, our, our services, our facilities are definitely tired.
There's a question.
Yes, sir.
About publishing your ski area master plan like everyone else?
It's online. Help, Jason. We have a master development plan for Alpine. We have one for Palisades. Uh, I apologize. I, I don't actually know where that lives. Um, maybe the Palisades one isn't online because we're not on Forest Service. So excuse me while I apologize. I don't know that. But we do have a master development plan. It does need to be refreshed. It hasn't been refreshed since like 2015, I believe. Um, and we've had quite a few lift configuration changes. So, somebody, I, did you, somebody asked about uphill capacity? You know, in, in that plan, the actual on the chair count back then was, was only 10,000, um, uh, skiers per hour. But we know that we, we can host. Our busiest day this year was January 29th. We had 17,500 scans. That's both sides. And, and we didn't really have that, uh, batted lines. So we know we can be at about 17. And now with Red Dog and with the gondola adding to that, um, we've got a lot of what we call comfortable carrying capacity in lifts. But we certainly don't in other, uh, parts of our facilities, like, uh, F and B seats and whatnot. Any more questions? No?
No.
Bill, I got one, one other big announcement. Oh, one question.
Uh, yeah, a really quick comment. Um, as someone who lives in the valley, I wanted to ask if you'd reconsider the way to handle parking lots? Because to be waited in a big, long line trying to get into the valley only to find that you're stopping each park coming in and telling them they have to turn around. And I just, I'm just trying to get to my house and I have to wait a half hour. Well, I don't know.
Was it better, was it better after?
This year, but I just think you didn't have as many days as you thought.
We didn't have as many days, but we changed the checkpoint. The idea was let's let everybody come in and, and let them, and a lot of people then were, hey, we suggest you turn around. But they're, they're going right into the parking lot, you know, shopping. They're gonna go see. So it did work out better, but that was actually to, to serve our, our homeowners and, and as well try to get more traffic off 89. You know, keep it from backing up. And the county's been very nice to, um, allow, allow us to have people pass on the right and things like that and turn a blind eye. Or I should say CHP.
We gotta move on. It's not really good for me to, she's my boss, so.
How about two quick ones, Fred?
You can fire me tomorrow.
The reserve or paid parking. My question is, where do those monies go that you would be collecting from reserve parking? Do they go back into public transportation or where do they go?
They would go, if there was any upside, um, they would go right back into fund, um, Mountaineer and other initiatives and our shuttles. We would contract with a third party. So we would pay a vendor to manage that program for us. So once we, you know, hit that threshold, again, if there was any upside, this would not be a make-money proposition. Because of the number of days we would be doing it for, we think. We haven't done all the math, but, um, any upside would be right back into our transportation. If, if we did it, we would wanna have backup with, um, off-site parking and shuttles into the resort. So if you missed it, if you didn't get a reservation, you can still come skiing, go to so-and-so parker ride, jump on our bus. This is what the other resorts do and we'll get you in here. So you don't miss out on that day. Lots, lots of me wants to figure out and it's June. And so I, again, I'm not optimistic we're gonna make this change, but it is something we're looking at.
Last question.
Last question, then I got one more announcement.
Uh, related, I see. Um, you mentioned the Third Lane, um, possibly coming in from Truckee, um, up here. Is that gonna extend all the way to the village within the valley?
Cindy? I don't know anything about Third Lane. The question, the question for those of you online is, uh, Third Lane and would it come in to the valley or just be an 89 initiative?
When they open the Third Lane, you know, it creates an incredible amount of dust. Um, if you live on Spawdies, you'll be dying.
Let's, let's, let's not, come on, being the Third Lane is years and years away.
Yeah, I think David's right. It's probably years and years away, but I'll defer to Cindy if she wouldn't mind just quickly addressing that.
Yeah, we've, we've been looking at the county level. We have a master plan to look at 89 and 267, both going to high occupancy vehicle or transit-only reversible lanes. Similar to the bank ridge or whatever. Huge cost, 400 million is the estimate for both of those to happen. I was back in DC in, wow, one of these months recently, uh, it goes March. And, um, we, we were lobbying to try to see what additional money we can get. It would be a great egress out of here in fire situations, great ingress for recreation and, and being able to reverse that. So we know it's needed. I think 89 would be easier than 267 just because we don't have the grade. Um, and are there pilot, are there steps we could start taking sooner than waiting till we raise the 200 million if we're gaining it? And that is really a ballpark number. Hasn't been an environmental document. It's just in a, a plan of we've gotta get people out of their cars. And they're coming. Northern California and Northern Nevada are growing exponentially. So.
And so just one quick thing because it's super awesome for our community. It's super awesome for Palisades Tahoe. Have you heard that we're hosting a World Cup?
Yeah. We're gonna need your help. We need volunteer. So look on our website. February 25th and 26th, men's, John Sloan is calling on Red Dog. And, um, we're, we're pretty excited about it. As you know, last, like, 62 years, we've been hosting big events in Palisades Tahoe. And, uh, got another big one. We're 25th, 26th. So we're excited.
Thank you, Bill. Those, uh, Bill and Kyle Freeze are, uh, head of our organizing committee. So, thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
So Cindy asked about, so if anyone has questions, she's really responsive on email. See if a question just.
Or my staff is, one of them.
And as an employee of these, I really did appreciate the burritos all winter long. Okay, so we've got like an hour or more. Is everyone okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next up is Alan Riley, who's the Fire Chief.
I'll try to be brief, but I will be brief. I guess after hearing Dee and Jason, just wanna say first off, well, first off, I'm Alan Riley. I'm the Fire Chief here in Olympic Valley. And thanks to Palisades Tahoe for, uh, as they said, they're moving some of the buildings for the Red Dog complex. And they gave us the opportunity to get in there, do some training. So it was great for the guys, do some, uh, forestable entry and exit training. So it was great fun tearing buildings apart. Um, I'll give you a quick background on, uh, who we are as far as the fire department goes. So we are a single firehouse here. We have four people on staff. We, we supplement that. We have seasonals during the, uh, the high summer months and the high winter months. So we'll run five people, typically run crew, two crews at a time. As you guys saw, we had a medical aid up the valley. Our crews went up and then it was maybe five minutes later, the ambulance went by. So we're getting that ambulance from either North Tahoe or Truckee. Most often it's right at the bottom of Alpine Meadows, otherwise Station 51 in Tahoe City or in, or in Truckee. So our guys are all paramedics or almost all paramedics. So pretty much every shift you get a minimum of two paramedics. They'll get on scene. We have all the paramedic equipment, everything we have. We just don't have the transporting capabilities of the ambulances. So that's why the call that you saw there, kind of explaining that a little bit. You know, with four and five people on duty, we're able to run multiple calls, but not everything. And that's kind of region-wide. So, you know, we do, we get the ambulance from North Tahoe Fire. If we have a bad incident here, we'll get neighboring districts. So don't be surprised. You see a Cal Fire Engine, a Truckee Engine, North Tahoe Engines here. We see it quite a bit. We're all part of that mutual aid program. So we're all off the scene dispatch center. So no matter what the call is, the closest resource is coming. Um, and I say that because again, if we have a fire here in our valley, we'll, we'll typically have three engines respond to that. The first one will be ours and the rest will be the neighbors. Same thing, we'll run into North Tahoe, we'll run in a Truckee and help those guys. So that's all part of our, our regional operational program. So that's all on the same dispatch channel. We have the same 911 dispatch. All that happens pretty seamless. We also have great mutual aid with our neighbors, including our, our partners in Nevada. The last couple summers, we've had our crews from this station have been out over 70 days. The last couple summers, we've had our crews from this station have been out over 70 days throughout the different, throughout the area. In the, in the regional area, we work pretty seamless as well. We've already sent resources out to New Mexico for the fires there. So the mutual aid program throughout the whole state of California, the whole western United States is pretty big and we're, we're part of that. So don't be surprised when you see other engines helping us participate here. So that's kind of the operations of the fire department. We've had a defensible space program here in the valley for over 25 years. We've tried to inspect every home in the valley. You know, we've had limited success with that or I guess up and down with success in that. I'd say the late 80s, early 90s, we even brought people to court for not doing their defensible space. It wasn't a, a big success for us. People wouldn't show up, would get rescheduled, which sending guys in overtime for there. So, you know, that didn't work, but we've been trying more the, the carrot than the stick. As Michael mentioned later, with some of our fuels programs and the green waste programs, we're, we're trying to figure out more ways to help you guys to do your defensible space and trying to help, help with the, the costs and the opportunities to get that green waste So as I say, we're, we have four guys on duty. They're, they're on duty, they're, they're on duty to respond to calls, but those are the guys that come out and do your defensible space inspections, you know, all the commercial inspections. So, you know, we're a small fire department, so we get out there, we inspect every property. You'll get a notice of us. We're getting out there to do those inspections. We're gonna start those, starting, or I think around the 10th of June, so maybe a little over the two weeks. So, uh, we please get out there, do your defensible space early. Once the season gets going, as I said, you know, we're pretty small staff. We're sending guys out of town. There's a lot of backflow. So our guys are doing their best to do all their other jobs and then getting out and doing the re-inspections. So please do your defensible space. Our, our plan, we signed an MOU with the county, we're able to, once we go out and do an inspection, we go do, go back into a re-inspection, we have the ability to just hand that over to Placer County after that and give it to Placer County to come out here and mitigate it. So, you know, they'll come out here, if you don't do the work, they're gonna do it for you and present you with a bill. So just letting you know that. So thank you so much for everything you guys have been doing. It's been a ton of work. Our first green waste day was 10 days ago?
15.
It was the 15th. Got it mapped. So we had, I think, five cubic, uh, five dumpsters, which is 150 cubic yards of green waste. So that's, that's great for, for May. We're almost not even gonna have one, thanks for the, the push of David and the fireworks community for that. And then we'll talk a little bit more about fuels management projects with Mike when he talks with the public service district. So the fire department is a division of the public service district, so those are some of the bigger projects. But what we, we talk about, or we'll talk about is, is some of the fuels management projects that we have our eye on here in the district. So Mike, as I said, we'll talk a little bit more about those, but basically both ridges around the homes, kind of the high areas where we want to thin the vegetation a little bit more or help some of the larger landowners that we can't demand that they do the work. You know, essentially there's, we're enforcing state laws. So the state law is within 100 feet of your house. So some of these larger landowners, if it's not within 100 feet of the house, we can't force them to do the work. So over the last 25 years, you know, all these homeowner associations, the resort Squaw Creek, we've been working with them one-on-one to try and get that work done. And they've been very good and very receptive about putting money aside to do those fuels management projects. But it's clear with what we see just in general, it's just not enough. We're trying to do more. So we are going after more grant funding. We're going after more, a lot more of these larger projects. What we want to see is, is that 300, 1,000 foot shaded fuel breaks. And what I mean is basically eliminating the ground fuels, getting rid of the ladder fuels and, and a lot of the thinning in the areas to, to make ourselves a little bit more resilient for a wildfire entering our community. So we'll talk about grant funding when, when Mike gets up here and some of those projects. I will mention Daniel Bradfield, our forester on this project, and she has been great in, in helping supply for these grants and working on our CWPP, which is a Community Wildfire Preparedness Plan. So been working on that just over a year now. We should see our first draft probably early this summer on that to give you an idea of, of all the different projects that we're looking at inside the valley. As, again, we'll, we'll talk about the green waste days, but we'll have one, at least one every month through October. And with that, that's all I have for you guys. If anyone has any quick questions, then I said we'll get into more of the fuels and green waste days when, when Mike gets up.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right. So I'm gonna be presenting for the planning department of Placer County, which puts me at a distinct disadvantage. By the way, people should know that every month there's a MAC meeting and a design review committee meeting. The MAC has the jurisdiction for any development that's done in the valley, commercial development. So we monitor, we were involved in the village and would be again if the specific plan is changed. The design review committee is responsible for the design of any commercial buildings, the lifts and also any home that's along Squaw Valley Road. So those meetings are the first Thursday of every month. The design review is 3:30, the MAC is at 6 o'clock. And a lot of things come out at those meetings, so I'd encourage people. Planning function. There are three projects that we'll go over. Again, this is not to debate these projects, but rather to give you a idea of what's going on. The first one is Granite View condominiums. I don't know how many of you are aware of this. There is a proposal to, actually at this point, it's, it's an idea to build a structure up above the ropes course. So if you're familiar with the Squaw Valley Village, sorry, Palisades, it's a Tahoe's specific plan, it's up above where the fractal homes would be. And the status of that is the ER, the EIR is under preparation now. So there's an NOP, notice of preparation that's gone out. And the next slide will talk about when that will be discussed. Different groups have already put out their positions on those. We are not here to discuss pros and cons, just to alert you as to this project is moving forward. And it probably would not appear before the MAC and then the planning commission and then the board of supervisors for probably a year, at least a year, spring of 2023. Next slide. So the status of it is it's, it's not yet in design review, but it's in the NOP process. So the status is the contract has been executed and there's a scoping meeting on the NOP scheduled for, actually it was held on May 12th. The next opportunity, so the NOP specifies what would be in the, what subjects would be detailed in the environmental impact report. And then once the environmental impact report comes out, that would then be, there'll be a public meeting to discuss the EIR. Then if it proceeds, it would come to the, the MAC and then it would go to the planning commission, then it'd go to the board of supervisors. So there'll be ample opportunity for people to discuss this project. And Steve, you'll know, is the planning supervisor and there's his phone number. But again, there'll be ample opportunity for people to provide input into this project. I know that this is a relatively controversial project. Moving on. So the next one is the museum. So the, it is planned to be, if you can envision the, I guess it's still called the Squaw Valley Park, maybe it's called the Olympic Valley Park by now. So it's got two parking lots that are sort of in a U configuration. And that, and the, the museum would go between the two parking lots in the area that's now got forested land. So the EIR on that is under, so the NOP was released, that is the scoping document for the environmental impact report has been released. And so the EIR is now underway. And the EIR is being funded partly by Placer County. This is a layout of what the, the building would look like. It would also include another meeting room, pretty much like this one, for the public to use. Next slide. So here's the status of that. What, it'd be 20,000 square feet, open year round. It would be, I guess you would have to pay a fee to get in. And is that right? I think so. And the environmental impact report, as I mentioned, is underway. There'll be plenty of opportunity. This, this project has not yet come to the MAC, so there's been no public meetings in the valley. But it would be once the environmental impact report is complete. All right, next one. So Sierra Family Meadows, I don't know a whole lot about this one, so I've asked Andrew to talk. There he is.
Yes. Is there another slide after this?
I don't know if that suits your purposes. By the way, people may have met Andrew. Andrew's the one who bought the Paulson estate. He's been a great neighbor, contributed to the valley a lot, and so I have a pleasure to have, turn this over to him.
So this was news that this was coming up today. So I'm, my family and I, and I, I didn't buy it, our family bought it, so thank you for that. It's, um, so if we can go back one, I, I really don't have much to say except it's preliminary. We're easy in the process. However, anybody gets and understands what we're doing, this is designed, no matter what anybody hears or talks or the drums go on or the talks go around, this is, this is a only solely contemplated, our intent is, this is for our family. We're not intending to commercially develop this. And it's, it's an intent and a process. My mom's 80, 83. We've been in, in the Tahoe area participating, skiing, racing, playing, living since 78, 1978. So this is a near and dear part. Some, somebody may have heard, but my grandfather was Hank Brannagh, who did avalanche control during the Olympics. And this place has very special meaning for us. Part of the process of getting a second home built on the property was for my mom and my sister. And as you kick off that, it opens the whole thing, which says, let's just take care of it all at one time. So regardless of how it goes on, I'm not prepared to go into a lot of details on it, especially since my mom and my sister aren't here and I really love them if it, if the right time comes out. But I just want to let, this is the face, this is part, one of the three faces behind Sierra Family Meadows. We're honoring their traditions and it's important and my, my grandfather's watching it. And actually Wayne Paulson, my grandpa, when we were talking with the Paulsons about buying it, found documents of those two corresponding to preserve the meadow. So it goes for years. And just wanted to put a face behind it. We're not ducking out. In fact, when I heard this morning, I mentioned to my sister and she said, please don't even show up. We don't want to create any controversy or anything because it's also preliminary. And I said, it wouldn't be okay if we're, this morning at the pancake breakfast and I didn't show up after saying I would. So I'm, I'm ducking. I don't want to add anything, but there's, that's who we are if you want to. Fred?
So as you're, this is preliminary, you say, and are you considering any public access? You're gonna develop some lots, as you say, but you do have open space. And is there a possibility for public access that might be worked out with nonprofits, with the county?
Well, if you go by any, any, any time now, it's pretty public. There's people on it all the time. So I think I'm not gonna answer that question if it's okay. With, with, I'll, I'll ask the grace. I will tell you in part of the analysis, we've done extensive Indian findings and there's a whole property set aside that's gonna be perpetually, the tribes looked at and everything. So I'm not gonna answer it with all respect. I appreciate it. I just don't have, I'm not prepared to.
Okay.
Okay?
I think you kept your last name.
Brannagh, B-R-A-N-A-G-H.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
I think, I think the key message that, you know, I, I had no, no role in preparing these slides that either. But the key message is that, number one, that land could have been zoned for like 300 bedrooms. And when his family bought it, that, that was a relief to everybody and he's not planning on doing the super development. So there's been, there's a lot of issues with regard to the county and trying to build a house for his sister. So we just need to make sure that the jungle, jungle drums don't get out of hand.
Because this, when, when we made a presentation a long time ago to the board of supervisors, that, one of them about the village project, he said, oh, you're from Squabble Valley. So we, we know, we know what can happen. All right, so those are the three projects that are presently being under consideration by the planning department. And he's the supervisor. Again, the design review committee looks at all the things that are like, like the lifts and homes along Squaw Valley Road and any commercial development. So we had, we actually had a year's worth of meetings on the village project about four or five years ago. And KSL at that point accepted 40, 40 of our 41 recommendations. So it was really good. Yep? So the question was what's happening in Resort at Squaw Creek? They, I guess there's nobody here to contradict me. So they, they actually put in a project to build 24, I think the number is 24 condominiums on the, on the meadow side of the road below the parking lot. And there, there actually was some grading that went on there and it sort of. Beyond that, I have no idea, but that's, that was only for 24 condominiums. There is a whole nother phase beyond that, which is for employee housing and another tower. And there's been no, no input, no discussion, no project plan, except they have that in their radar, in their long-term plan. So this, right now, the only thing they've got is, is the plan for these 24 condos. And for all I know, the permit has expired and they'll, they'll probably be asking for an extension. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'd just like to find out more about when, when they plan on doing that?
Do, doing the?
The 24, the first 24.
Yeah, I have no idea. It was supposed to, they actually should have been building by now and they're not. So either it's not penciling out or they, they hit some kind of road, roadblock. But there's the guy to call.
Okay.
All right? And get, get in more, much more accurate information than I'm delivering. Any other questions? Okay, so Mike, you're up.
So he's got a slide. She done it?
Yeah. Which one?
He's the memorial town called me.
Yeah. Hi, thank you, guys. Thanks for being here today. Welcome to your building here at the Olympic Valley Public Service District. Thanks, Dave, for letting me speak and putting this all together. I think it's very informative and I think you'll get a resounding support to do it again. Yeah, good job. Before I forget, I'll let you know that there's some flyers over there, similar to the, some of the slides you'll see. There's a sign-in sheet if you want to get on our mailing list. We send out e-news blasts and, and periodic emails. We try not to pepper people's inboxes too much. So don't be afraid to share your email with us. We won't abuse it or give it away. Talk to a couple of these slides.
Should we read?
Yeah. Talk about the slides here. As of July 1st last year, our municipal solid waste collection provider, which is Tahoe Truckee Sierra Disposal, no longer will pick up green waste from the curb side. And if, if you left any green waste out on the curb last year, they may not have taken it, may have just left it there. And they're having some problems over there with the amount of green waste that they're receiving and, and having a difficult time getting rid of it. So they're no longer taking that with municipal solid waste. It requires separation and so we're working with them. In response, our board of directors, we have two of them here, Bill Hudson and Fred Olfeld, there's three, sorry.
Olfeld, there's three, sorry. We have our president Dale Cox over there as well. They decided to fund six green waste days this summer. We had our first one on May fifteenth. We have another one on June twelfth, July tenth. From this point forward, it's the second Sunday of the month, all the way to October ninth. And with an extra one on a Saturday, it's the next one coming up, June eighteenth. And that's right out here in this parking lot. This will be the last one that we include in our contract with TTSD. And that'll be a, that'll be hosted by them as opposed to us. Friends of Squaw Valley, who are generous enough to put a volunteer force together to man the gates to make sure that we don't get anything dumped on Lot Four across the street that shouldn't be there. Huge thanks to Palisades Tahoe D for letting us use that space rent-free. Big thanks from the community in helping us become a little bit more prepared for wildfire and be able to respond to our own fire department's messaging on establishing and maintaining defensible space. We think it was kind of a rough road for us last year when we found out that TTSD wouldn't take those, the green waste anymore, because it really ran in conflict with the messaging from our fire department to clear out your lot. So in response, this is what we did as well, next slide, please. Develop a green waste-only dumpster rebate program. We've tried to shorten it, but we couldn't. And what this does is, if you want to, six-yard green waste-only dumpster delivered to your house by TTSD, I think they're delivering them on Wednesdays, and they'll come back the next Wednesday after you've filled it up and haul it off for you. You pay them a hundred and thirty-seven bucks, and then come show us the receipt. And if you live here in the valley or on the river road in our fire service area, we'll reimburse you a hundred percent. And that was just another weapon that the board decided to choose in response to the reduction in the level of service from TTSD. And I think it's a great program. We had, I think, in total last year, maybe four properties that took advantage of it. We started it halfway through the summer. We got it together a little more this year and got the word out earlier, and we're already up to three rebates. That's exciting. Exciting. And so, you know, Chief Riley would, you know, spoil the presentation a little bit. And I am going to talk about fuel reduction, because that's been a big focus of ours over the last nine months, twelve months. And so I do want to talk a little bit about that. Our fire department is jobbed out. Every person on the staff is asked to do more than a typical fire department. And so we struggle with staffing and getting extra work done. And so we really want a fuels management program. And that's a that's an important element of our fire department that the board wants to expand. I will say that we've had a defensible space program going back to the eighties, and that is our fuels management program, but we want to do a little bit more. In a few slides, I'll I'll show you some of the different elements that could constitute a fuels management program, some of the things that we're working on. Since we don't have the staff to write grants, we said, well, why don't we take ten grand and get a get a consultant to write the grant for us? So Chief Riley mentioned we were using Feather River Forestry, and that's Danielle Bradfield. She's a registered professional forester, and she wrote a grant for us to CalFire for 1.1 million dollars. And that included fuel treatments in these areas. OV1 on the north ridge, which abuts the Five Peaks Project, which is being done by the Forest Service, I'll talk about that later. OV2, which is the Squaw Creek corridor between Highway eighty-nine and Olympic Valley Road, and OV3, which is the south ridge, right behind the building. We heard from CalFire that our application scored very high, but they don't have as much money as we need, and they asked us to cut it in half. So the 1.1 million dollars went down to 540, that was our new budget. So we we reduced the project scope to fit that budget, next slide, please, and had to reduce and had to eliminate OV2 and OV3. But we're still moving forward with OV1, it's about 128 acres. It can fit in with that 540,000-dollar budget unless we see green waste disposal prices go up, and diesel's going up. So we're we're still looking good, and we'll find out in June, I think in a couple of weeks, whether or not we win that grant. It's not secured yet, but we're looking pretty good. And so that's, you know, we classify that as a, you know, a large acreage fuels reduction project. This one's called the Olympic Valley Fuel Reduction Project. And we look forward, we'll have about three years to complete that project. If we find out in June that we want it, we'll start doing permitting this year, doing CQ to comply with California Environmental Quality Act, and then have boots on the ground next summer. Contractors are hard to find, but we'll find one. And look forward to submitting additional grants to do, you know, to get OV3 and to get OV2 done as well. The CWPP, which we expect in June, are going to identify the different treatment areas. It will also include a ribbon of space around the residential properties to give the fire department a bit of a buffer space between the wildland and the properties they intend to protect, should they need to. Move on from there. This is the Five Peaks Project, we're working with the Forest Service. Our input to the Forest Service on this project is, we're glad to see road, maybe a better identifier. And we really want them, you know, on the east side of the highway, on the east side of the Truckee River, to really bring those treatments down to the properties there to get as much of that vegetation cleared out and removed as possible, give our firemen a better chance at protecting those structures. And so we've written that letter, and we'll continue to be engaged with the Forest Service on this project. And we're just really happy that that they're working on it. It's a huge benefit to us, and really complements our efforts as well. This is it, this is our vegetation map. And you can see, so this is Cove Creek up here, and here's the Truckee River. The red chip is Highway eighty-nine, and you can see the properties in Olympic Valley at the very bottom of the map here. So it's OV1, our treatment area, is adjacent to and shares a border with the Five Peaks Project. That's going to, it's a huge project that intends to, you know, treat this whole area in the boundary. Some of it goes up to the ridge. We're also encouraging them to kind of encroach on that cow trans right away to help improve the evacuation route from Olympic Valley northward.
It should be noted that the land along eighty-nine has never burned, so that area is very, very overgrown.
Yeah, it's true. Yeah, you can see it when you're driving by. So here are some of the elements that I was talking about. So we're busy now with, you know, staffing, we're outsourcing that with Danielle Bradfield. We are writing grants, we're administering grant contracts. We may be looking at a tax measure down the road to help fund some of these efforts, but now working on our planning documents, such as the CWPP. We win the grant, we'll be working on some permitting and project management, of course. This is an ongoing element of our fuels reduction program. We, you know, there's discussion about the NFPA standards getting a little bit more aggressive, because they're showing that they're really not as effective as they need to be to be protecting properties. Public outreach, you know, the Firewise, Olympic Valley Firewise Community, you should get on their email if you're not already, but there looks like they may be focusing on home hardening. There are grant funds out there to replace shake roofs with metal roofs and change out the siding on homes to more fire-resistant materials. We know that the evacuation is an important issue, and that's something we're working with the Forest Service on. All right. You know, this is, I'm going to shift gears away from fire and fuels management, talk a little bit about drinking water. This map here is to show our west tank. And just to orient folks, if you know, we're wash, our drive, we're kind of dead ends here, and then there's a gate and a dirt road that our maintenance guys take up to the tank. It's a 1.1 million gallon tank. And we inspect it, we send, we disinfect and chlorinate divers and wetsuits, and then put them into the tank, and they do inspections for us on the inside coating of the tank. And they, over the last few years, have warned us that the the coating is failing. When that happens, it can rust out. So we are going to go in there this later this summer, when demands are a little bit lower than the peak, which we see in about July and August, to recoat the inside of the tank, we'll be recoating the outside before that. Give the, to give the graffiti artist a new canvas. So you'll be hearing from us over the summer as we get ready for this project, because it's a little bit of a of a roll of the dice, because we're going to replace that tank with supply from our eastern tanks. We have two of them over here on the south side of the valley. We're we're replumbing one of our pump houses and some of our piping to allow the flow to come back towards the west end of the valley to provide domestic supply as well as well as fire flow. But we are going to be down 1.1 million gallons at the end of the summer, beginning of autumn, that's wildfire season. So we're really going to be asking folks to conserve water. We're already in our third year of drought. We'll be putting in front of our board, and in June, a proposal to enter into stage-two water conservation. On Wednesday, the California Water Resources Control Board said that they will be going into stage-two, and that's typically our, how we handle that, is we wait for the state to mandate that, and then we're quickly on their heels. But with the reduced storage capacity later in the summer, we're really going to have to emphasize water conservation. So that's it for the slideshow. Also, at the June meeting, first of all, since we're talking about meetings, let me plug our board meetings. We meet the last Tuesday of every month at eight-thirty in the morning. So we're meeting on Tuesday after Memorial Day, May thirty-first. We'll be in this room at eight-thirty, and you guys are all encouraged to come. We'd love to have more public participation there. At our meeting in June, the board will be considering fiscal year budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. It's a nine-million-dollar budget. They'll be considering rate hikes on water, sewer, and garbage as well. And Mike can answer questions about the budget, if you have it, have them. We'll be looking at a new HVAC master plan coming up for this facility here. This building, that system's getting about twenty years old. It's been costing us a lot of money to keep it working and keep our firemen warm, and so it's a good time for us to take a look at how we might redesign that and start saving some money on heating and cooling the place. We talked about drought, talked about the recoat project. We're also working on a changing out every water meter in the valley, and we'll be upgrading our technology there, so that we'll be able to read them through a cellular endpoint, is what it's called. This will allow you, as customers, to monitor consumption and usage on your cell phone. So we look forward to that technological upgrade and that ability, and that insight into how you're using your water and to help people, you know, manage their water use better. We'll be working on a capacity and reliability study that'll probably be brought to the board in July. We do these studies periodically to know how much water supply we have. We take a look at recent usage, we look at our supply, we reassess that, make sure that the numbers we're relying on are accurate, and then make an estimate on how much more development we can provide drinking water to. The last time we did it was in 2016. We estimated that we could serve 117 equivalent dwelling units with our current water supply, and that we rely on the operation of four wells in the west end of the valley, as well as two horizontal wells on the south, the south ridge. And since then, we haven't had too much development. The big development's been the Palisades development here on Creeks End Court. And so we'll reassess that and come up with a new estimate. Of course, as new development is proposed and built, they'll be bringing additional water supply to improve our ability to serve those, serve new development. We reconvened the Olympic Valley Groundwater Management Plan last month. Our Board of Directors did approve a six-year review and report. We do that periodically at the direction of the Department of Water Resources to make sure that local management of the water resources here is being performed and being reported out to the state as as required. We'll be also working on installing pressure-reducing stations on the east end of the valley to help reduce some of the pressures that we're seeing down here that could be as high as 150, 160 PSI. That's enough to blow a teacup out of your hand. So and that helps the lines last longer, have less leaks, conserve water. And so that's a good project, and we look forward to that. You'll see some work finishing up on Olympic Valley Road, just past the S-turn, where it's called the Hidden Lake Water and Sewer Replacement Project. And we're sneaking that project in before the construction of a single-family residence on that property. So we're going to get out of their way before they start pouring a foundation. Sewer pipe inspections are ongoing, and that is all to prepare a sewer rehab project where we'll identify multiple sewer lines for rehab or replacement. Could be in situ lining, it could be us digging up the road or the backyard easement to replace the lines altogether. We expect construction on that to begin maybe two years from now, and probably last for four or five years. We're working with Jason on the village project, and we'll be preparing a development agreement with Altera on that. We expect that to occur in the later part of this year. The Resort Squaw Creek Phase Two, I think it's eighteen townhomes, and it could be the earliest they would build those would be later this year, and they would pour foundations for one of the buildings. I think there's going to be three different structures containing eighteen townhomes. That is Phase Two A. For them to do that, they have a development agreement with the PSD here. They are required to deliver us one of their irrigation wells, it's called Well Eighteen Three R. We did have a a planning meeting for that and took a look at the the first set of plans for that well. It's being designed, you know, by the by the property owner for our review and approval. And last item, we just completed our eleventh year of removing snow on the bike trail this summer with the help of Placer County, and thank Cindy if she was here. They're installing four benches along the along the bike trail. I was out last week, maybe two weeks ago, with the new director of the Department of, they have a new department at the county called the Department of Parks and Open Space. And the new director they hired is Steve Gayfield, seems like a good guy, but walked the bike trail, found four spots that we think would be good for benches for folks to take a rest and and have to take in the view there.
Yeah. Any questions?
Andrew, at one point, the Resort Squaw Creek was going to completely redo their watering system on the golf course to save thousands of millions of dollars. Where is that?
That's in, that's in our development agreement. You know, they have to do some batching and some other water conservation practices, and then it requires some reworking of the of the golf course. That's required of our development agreement. They don't need to do it if they don't build. And they haven't built yet, so we're we'll be waiting.
That's not part of the eighteen.
It's getting close. Yeah, no.
Can you answer questions so people up there can hear?
Yeah, the question Yeah, the question from the audience was, what is the status of the water conservation implementation on the golf course? And we expect to see those, you know, the, what's the, so those improvements made in conjunction with the development of Phase Two of the project.
Any other questions?
We've droughted last three years and droughts in the past, more in the future. What's the water table under the valley floor? I understand there's something underwater.
What's happening here? Okay, yeah. The question is, what is this, what, how does the aquifer work? It's tough to put a number on that. How it works is, you know, is that we have a, we have an aquifer under the valley and the stream's cutting it off. But right here at the edge of the stream, there's a, there's a fault that goes north, south almost. This is what we call the East Valley. We don't have any production wells over here. Our wells are all under the parking lot at Palisades Tahoe. That's where the good water is. We have four wells there. The Mutual Water Company has two wells there. Palisades Tahoe has four wells in the aquifer. Pump Jack has a small irrigation well. And that aquifer fills up when it rains. You know, so when, when the fall, fall comes in October, November, December, when we see that, we know that our aquifer is going to fill back up because at that point, we've been through a dry summer where our aquifer, aquifer levels get to be their lowest in the year.
Can, can you guys go offline on that? Because we want to keep going.
Yeah, that's a long answer. But happy to talk with you offline on it.
The answer to that one's a long story.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
It's me. So one of the other hats I wear is the president of the Mutual Water Company. So as people may or may not know, there are actually two water companies in the valley. There's the Mutual Water Company, which is Yeah, just one slide. I'm going to catch up because I only have one slide. The Mutual Water Company is the original residential area that the Poulsons designed first. So it's basically Lanny and Christie and Sandy, Wayne, Eric, that area there. And it is surrounded by the Public Service District, Water District. But we're, we are actually two separate water companies and there is no, at this point, physical interconnection between the two. So the Mutual Water Company has actually been in existence since 1950. So much of the infrastructure that's in the ground is actually from that period of time. And for those of you who've been here for a while, know that 10 years ago, actually now more like 14 years ago, the Mutual Water Company started a major plan to replace all the pipes in the ground. So through the, we borrowed money from the USDA, US Department of Agriculture with the first loan to replace, and we actually wound up doing about 60%. And now we're into a second USDA loan and we're replacing the rest of it. So item, also for the last seven years, the, we have no permanent staff. It's all run by volunteers. We don't even get burritos. And we were, we were outsourcing, contracting with the Public Service District for the operation and maintenance of the water system. For the last seven years, they informed us that they could not continue that. So as of July 1st, we are transitioning to a different contract operator in operational technical services. And some of their employees are now on site and getting trained in operating the system and the transition point is July 1st. So we have one more month to go of overlap. So that's a major activity for the mutual. It's a big change for us after seven years with the mutual, with the Public Service District. For those of you who live along Sandy, there was a lot of construction last year to replace the main water pipe. We did, we got a late start and we got an early end because of the snow. So the, the construction company is starting up on Tuesday to continue that work. So they will be going from wherever they ended last year to where it links up with the pipe that was put in 10 years ago. The goal is to have that pipe finished and the street repaved by July 4th. So another month. We are, then after that's done, we will go to Paiuti, which is another air, another road that's got the really old pipe. And we will replace that. And then we're, we're working right now with the USDA to evaluate, what do we do next? We will monitor the progress of the construction over the course of the summer and decide how much, how much work we, beyond that, we can do. There are three more roads back on that end of it that have to be done. There are some interconnects that have to be done. There's a main line up to our water tanks that has to be done. So we've got a lot of things in our plate. Unfortunately, costs from labor have skyrocketed as everybody probably has read over the last year, year and a half. So it's pretty clear we're not going to be able to finish everything that we set out to do. So prioritizing our projects is a really important part. What will we leave and what will we get done? There is an annual meeting July, September 3rd. And there will be two board seats up for election. The current board members will be running for reelection. I want to add one thing to what Mike said. The CWPP he referred to is called the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And the purpose of that was to map out the, the the land around us and to then you put that into a model to figure out how forest fires would spread. And based on that, different areas are prioritized for treatment. And the, the money to do the Community Wildfire Protection Plan was the best example I can give you of a community effort. Palisades at Tahoe, which was then known as Squaw Valley, they put in money, the resort at Squaw Creek put in money, the Public Service District put in money, the Brannos put in money, other homeowners put in money. It was very, very much a community effort, realizing that the Community Wildfire Protection Plan had to get done. We were never going to get a grant to do major forest wildfire mitigation unless we had a Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And we were the only area in North Tahoe that did not have a Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So we had to have it in order that we could then apply for grants. Nicely, the Public Service District put in for a grant that refunded some of that money. And the people who originally put up the money have graciously put that back into the Firewise community so that we could sponsor things like the Green Waste Program and other things. So I just wanted to shout out that, that's an example of the community coming together, all the elements that are here and contributing to something for the common good. So that's the Mutual Water Company report. If anybody has any question, trying to catch up. All right. Next, we have Joy Doyle. For those of you who don't know her, she is not a resident of Olympic Valley, so you can boo when she comes up. But she is the Executive Director of the Mountaineer. And I hope all you guys know about the Mountaineer.
Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I was going to say, I have been in the community. I've, I've lived in Carnelian Bay for over 30 years. So give me credit for that. I'm not a newcomer. And many of you might, might know my husband, Brian Doyle from Granite Peak Management. So puts, puts me in perspective. So thanks for having me. It's an honor to be here with the celestrious group. Many of you are familiar with SACCO and Mountaineer. But for those of you who aren't, I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview. Squaw Alpine Transit Company, known as SACCO, is the nonprofit organization formed as a collaborative effort of Olympic Valley and Alpine Meadows homeowner associations, our lodging properties and the ski resort to address ingress and egress issues and to become a more competitive mountain destination. The outcome of, of that for, was the formation of a tourism business improvement district called the T-Bid to fund Mountaineer, the app-based, on-demand complimentary shuttle service that hopefully all of you have used for Alpine Meadows and Olympic Valley guests and residents. SACCO is the pioneer of the use of T-Bids to fund transit. And we are also the pioneer of the use of microtransit in North Lake Tahoe. So we're proud of both of those things. We started operating Mountaineer in December of 2018. SACCO is run by a nine-person volunteer board, the illustrious Keith Fountain and David Stepper on that board. And I'm SACCO's only part-time staff. Next slide please. Moving on to the next slide please. Thank you. Mountaineer is funded through assessments that are paid by patrons within the Squaw Valley, Alpine Meadows Pass Transit District boundaries. It's 1% assessment on lodging, 1% assessment on Palisades Tahoe daily lift tickets and 1% assessment on Palisades Tahoe frequency products. Next slide please. Mountaineer operates 10 vehicles in the winter months only so far, mid-December through mid-April typically. And we do transportation just within each of the two valleys. Typically, Palisades Tahoe Shuttle has provided the transportation between the two valleys. But we're excited that the base-to-base gondola is going to be replacing that service in the upcoming winter. Super cool stuff. Next slide please. Mountaineer's been highly successful since its inception despite two service suspensions due to COVID, the end of our second season and almost nearly our entire third season. We've provided more than 100,000 rides to more than 200,000 passengers. We serve nearly 500 average daily passengers. Our average wait time is seven minutes. We've had over 21,000 people download our app. And we are very, very proud of our net promoter score of 92, which boy, when Dee threw those numbers out, I was like, huh, aren't we good, right? So unfortunately, our ridership did decrease this last winter as compared to winter 2019, 20. We'll continue to work with Palisades Tahoe and the Transportation Management Association to increase and strengthen our marketing to make sure everybody knows about us and bring our ridership back to pre-pandemic levels. But we need all of your help because you guys are our mouthpieces. So please help spread the word about Mountaineer and encourage your fellow residents and guests to use it and TART Connect when they're operating. Explain it's convenient, it's good for the environment, it helps ease traffic congestion, and it's free. Oh my gosh, what's free anymore these days? And with gas prices these days, that's a huge benefit. Next slide please. So Cindy touched on this. As a result of Mountaineer's overall success, Placer County began piloting microtransit with TART Connect throughout North Lake Tahoe last summer. And it's funded through TOT. It's been very successful. They do use the same contractor that SACCO uses to provide our services for Mountaineer. So there's great synergies there. Someone at the urging of SACCO, in case you guys didn't know, TART Connect offered service between Olympic Valley and Tahoe City that started last winter, Fridays and Saturday evenings. And it's going to continue this summer, in the fall and next winter. So if you didn't know, take advantage of that. And also, starting this summer, TART Connect is going to expand into Truckee. So more than ever, you guys, public transit is a real thing. Jump on the buses, jump on, on all those free options available to you. Next slide please. So soon after the 2% TOT renewal vote is known in June, Measure A, the board and I are scheduled to begin our petition drive to renew the district that funds Mountaineer before it's due to sunset in September of next year. This requires business owners who collectively pay more than 50% of the total assessments to sign petitions. This will be followed by the Placer County Board of Supervisors' public hearings. These are required. And with a projected completion date by the end of November of this year. To continue existing and to expand Mountaineer services in the future to keep up with projected cost increases and because Mountaineer has no guarantee of any other outside funding, we will renew our district at 1.5% assessments. Again, on lodging, daily lift tickets and the frequency products within our boundaries. So this is a 1.5% increase. We have the support for this increase from our district's major revenue generators, Supervisor Gustafson, Placer County Tahoe Executive Staff and the Transportation Management Association. Before closing, I have a spoiler alert. To remove the word Squaw from our organization's name to capitalize on Mountaineer's strong brand and at the same time that we renew our district, we'll begin using a new name for our organization starting next month. It's a pretty obvious one, Mountaineer Transit Company. And there's our new URL, mountaineertransit.org. So that concludes my present, presentation. I'll turn it over for any comments and questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Again, I appreciate everybody's indulgence. There are two more things and they're both videos. The first one is from the Friends of Squaw Creek. And I, I've taken a very long video and I've cut it down to be a very short video. And it's really, really well done. I really encourage people to go to the Friends of Squaw Creek website and, and download and watch the whole video. This is just a very small portion of it. But it's, it's really well done. Those guys have been doing great work in, in cleaning up Squaw Creek through the meadows and most of it's not really known to the people that are around, except for the, the people that are actually doing the work. So It's not Forest Futures, it's the other one. Not that one. Yes, it's got to be that one. Yeah. This is only like four minutes. The only thing that I know is they've asked for an extension. Yeah, so. And while the original plan was for hotels and condos, I believe that whatever they come out with now will just be condos. But we'll have to wait to see what their plan is.
Well, it'd be hard not to love Squaw Valley. I can, you know, I remember even as a child, five or six years old, looking around going, wow, I'm just so lucky to live here.
Olympic Valley is an incredible place. We have our majestic mountains and our world-class ski terrain. We have a beautiful ecosystem and thriving habitat. And it really makes for a unique opportunity to blend people and nature.
Beautiful soft meadow and running water. Then you got these granite peaks, you know, you got violence and love all at the same place. Or love and violence and it switches. Yeah, it's, it's pretty special. And I pinch myself that we get to be here every day.
What's the creek mean to me? It's, it's the soul of Squaw Valley.
People in the valley should probably care about Squaw Creek because, I mean, this, it's what made this valley. It's why they have attachment to this place. It formed the landscape. Water is the lifeblood of, of everything. So you don't protect your water, you don't, you don't really have everything else. So Squaw Creek is formed by the North Fork and the South Fork. The North Fork is in Shirley Canyon. The South Fork is mostly in the The South Fork is mostly in the ski area. And they come together around the parking lot and flow through the meadow and ultimately out into the Truckee River.
Well, every, every mountain creek and, and ecosystem matters to everybody, whether they know it or not. Everything's, you know, the, the one thing that I think that we've, that we're slowly learning as, as a people is that everything affects everything else. And so there, there are no small actions. Everything affects everything down the line. And we're at the top. So if you don't take care of things at the top, it's not going to be okay at the bottom either.
In 2002, there was community alarm about the status of the creek. It had been listed as impaired due to sediment by the EPA and the State Water Board back in 92.
There's a variety of man-made, you know, influences over the past century that have basically put Squaw Creek in a ditch. And so what that means is you have a singular channel that's carrying all of the energy that melts off the mountain every single spring and early summer. And what that does, if you basically focus the energy into one channel like that, it starts to downcut into the meadow. It doesn't allow the meadow to absorb that runoff during the spring and summer. And there's nothing in the bank account at the end of the year to provide cold, clean water for fish in wildlife and what we call the late base flow in August, September, and October. And so a lot of the times in Squaw, you have a dry channel during those months when really you should be having a recharge from a really, really wet meadow back into the creek. Creek, which is a high sediment load coming off the mountain and from the meadow itself, from eroding banks. You can do wonders for the fishery in not just Squaw Creek, but the Truckee River downstream. The general goal of the project is to delist Squaw Creek from its 303 delisting under the EPA. That means creating fixes that significantly reduce the sediment in this watershed.
When we began the process of planning restoration in this valley, we had a very grandiose vision. We looked at the entire meadow and the entire valley. And we've been able to break that up into pieces. For the upstream restoration, we've been able to provide our goals and our objectives on behalf of the Friends of Squaw Creek to the ski resort. And Palisades Tahoe has taken that upon itself to incorporate those goals for restoration into its EIR for future development. So in our original attempts at watershed restoration, we looked at a project plan for the entire meadow segment. And as we've had to prioritize areas of goals and objectives for these grants, we've isolated pockets of the meadow that need to have a restoration done first or are higher priorities. So we've had Phase One in the North Meadow, Phase Two in the Middle Meadow, and a future Phase Three in the downstream Eastern Meadow. And some of these goals, we've been able to postpone doing work in the Eastern Meadow while our land acquisition was in process in the meadow. But now we've been able to really focus in on Areas One and Two and get into more detail and more depth to make those successful for our restoration project.
Hi, everyone in Olympic Valley. I'm Stacy Caldwell, the CEO of the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation. And thank you for this opportunity to share what's happening with our Forest Futures Program at the Community Foundation. The Community Foundation connects people and opportunities, generating resources to build a more caring, creative, and effective community. We are governed by a wonderful board of directors here in our community as well as a committed and amazing staff who love this place and want to serve. We are best known for programs such as our Community Collaborative, Mountain Housing Council, the grant making we do to all of the nonprofits in our community, the scholarship work to our community youth. But today, we really wanted to share what's happening and the progress we've made so far in focusing on the challenges we face as a community with our forest. Our vision is to ensure healthy forests today, tomorrow, and for generations to come so that generations of future community members can enjoy this place and this beautiful forest that we live in. We want to see our sustainable forest management speed up and scale to what we need to protect us from the catastrophic wildfires. And we want to see an acceleration of market solutions that will support a more diverse economic opportunity for our region. Our areas of impact include protecting our community, the most basic things such as ensuring our community has access to the resources they need for defensible space, evacuation routes, fire breaks, early warning detection center. We need to rebuild a forest infrastructure for a forest economy. So that includes a workforce, large equipment, small diameter sawmills, biomass, and fuels management. And finally, if we do all of this, we believe that it will incentivize private investments for more sustainable forestry businesses to give us that opportunity to diversify our economic opportunities in this region. So, so far, since September of last year, we have engaged all of our on-the-ground partners, many of whom have been grantees of the Community Foundation for more than two decades. But now in a much more meaningful and strategic way around how to accomplish the impact that we seek. So far, we've raised $3.3 million. A million dollars is out the door and $2 million has been approved and is currently on its way to these projects I'm going to share. About 80% of our commitment thus far has been in the protect category of impact because as we've learned from last summer, this is the most important category to protect our community. But we've also made some really great investments in building that forest economy primarily in workforce development. So with the $2 million allocated, I'm happy to share that almost 1,000 acres are in this program for fuels management. And you'll see important work from fire breaks to evacuation routes there. We've also invested in strategy and planning to get us ready for a much more accelerated fuels management process work that's ahead of us. And we're excited to share that we have made some significant investments in workforce development. Here are some of our grantees. Many of them you know well, I'm sure, and do fantastic work in this region. So in that Phase Two, that second million that I referenced, we're really looking at building new capacity for our firewise communities. Believe it or not, there's almost 30 firewise communities in this region and all managed by our fire districts, four of our fire districts. And they do a fantastic job serving our community. But firewise communities are volunteer-based. So imagine organizing and supporting that many volunteers throughout the region. So the Community Foundation is jumping in and helping with the coordination of that, providing direct financial support to the fire districts so that they can have the right expertise to support it. But we're also going to invest in a coordinator and programming to really beef up the connective communications and activities of the firewise councils throughout our region. We're also excited to invest in a community college program that is really supporting the next generation of workforce, both in firefighting and forest management, continued efforts around defensive space and green waste processing, and an exciting business competition that's yet to be announced. So stay tuned. How is all of this work impacting Olympic Valley? Well, let me tell you. We are closely engaged in leadership with both Palisades and your fire district. Direct dollars are going into fuels reduction of Five Creeks Project, which is an evacuation corridor for Olympic Valley as well as a lot of our basin residents. We're giving directly to the fire district to fill in the gaps and provide capacity that they need. And as I mentioned, we're playing a key role in the coordination and support of those firewise communities. And then the last thing I wanted to share is the Community Foundation, over the last year, almost year and a half, have been working with our jurisdictions and other key partners to stand up what's called a COAD. It's a best practice around disaster preparedness. So you'll be hearing more about that in the future as well. So my invitation to you is to join us. Our next salon is actually June 9th, and it is about evacuation preparedness. It's one you won't want to miss. But if you do miss it, it's virtual and you can always go to our YouTube channel where we have a catalog of all of our prior meetings. So you won't miss a beat. We'd love introductions and opportunities to present this work. We'd love for you to consider giving to this campaign. And if you want to talk, catch up, have any questions, please reach out. You can email kate@ttcf.net. And with that, I hope you have a wonderful holiday. Thanks to all who serve. And thanks to those who gave their life to serve and protect this wonderful country like we live in. We are so lucky to live and be able to be in this forest. I wish you all well and hope to see you soon. Thank you.